All right. Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome to this Concord Township Zoning Commission meeting of Tuesday, November the first. Let me move to call to order. Heather, if you could, please.
Mr. Schindler?
Here.
Mr. Lindenthaler?
Here.
Mr. Repper?
Here.
Mr. Peterson?
Here.
Mr. Eifelies?
Here. Thank you, Heather. Next item on our agenda is approval of minutes from October the 4th, 2022. Any comments from any of the board members?
Everybody's looking at me now. I am pleased to announce Mindy did an excellent job.
Wow. As she always does.
Mark just stayed on the calendar.
Mark this thing.
Given that, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of the October 4th meeting as written.
Quickly before he changes.
And I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes stand approved. Thank you. Yeah, okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is correspondence. Any correspondence received by members. Frank?
Not me, Mr. Chairman. Nothing here, Mr. Chairman?
I did receive an email from a gentleman regarding a complaint on lighting.
Mm-hmm. I received that as well.
I believe Andy did as well, just late today, so other than receiving an email, that's all I have to report. Andy, same?
Yeah, same thing. Yeah, that email on the lighting issue.
Rich? And I did get a call from a neighbor with an issue related to the size of accessory buildings in an RCD, which is 200 square feet, but she was told by the homeowners association that she could only go 12 by 12. And that's kind of an up in the air issue. I talked to Heather about it. The permit was issued for a 10 by 16, so the question became which overrules the other. And in the homeowners association, the deed restrictions, no sizes mentioned, so I can't see how... She's in an argument with the developer's employee, but I can't see how she could lose that argument. But I don't know the answer, other than that she has a permit and she's in compliance with zoning.
Interesting. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Rich. There being no other correspondence to report, our next item on the agenda is public participation. If there's anyone from the public wishes to address the board on the topics of the agenda this evening? And no one on the phone as well?
Correct.
Okay, there being no one here for public participation, we'll move on to our new business. So our first item on the agenda for new business is the site plan review application number 55, submitted by Maruus Brothers Construction on behalf of the property owner, the IN9 Group LLC, for a proposed ice cream parlor and car wash to be located on Cryle Road and Old Cryle Road on a parcel known as current parcel number 08-A-020-0-00-048-0. I see Mr. Green here, maybe on behalf of the applicant. If you could step forward. Mark, if you have something to present, your name and address, please, for the record.
Sure. Name is Mark Green, work for Maruus Brothers Construction. Address is 36933 Vine Street, Willoughby, 44094.
What we'd like from you, Mark, since I know you, provide an overview of the project.
Sure.
Explain the objectives and the project for the board members, and we'll go through the staff report subsequent to that.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
This is a site at the corner of Cryle and Old Cryle. It's a corner lot. Our client would like to put a car wash on that site along with an ice cream parlor. So the drawings that you have in front of you show both buildings sighted. There's a civil package included in there, as well as exterior elevations, floor plans, and some rendering in there. What I brought in addition to that is a couple of color boards that I could hand off to you so you could see the actual material callouts for the materials that you see in the packet. And then a couple other of the other handouts we have with us today are some revisions to parking. There are some questions on the calculations of parking, so we've redone that and brought copies of that for you to look at, as well as a question about the vacuum stations, what they look like, and brought a cut sheet for what those vacuum stations look like as well.
Uh-huh, okay.
So that's really the overview.
Okay, thank you, Mark. We have indicated by and through Heather that given the number of review comments and issues that are before us, to consider tabling this matter, particularly since it looks like there's a variance that is still required for the drive-through for the ice cream parlor. Any comments related to that? Mark, you wish to proceed?
I would only ask that we are trying to get the ice cream parlor constructed for the summer season. So we are in kind of a pinch to get out there and start site work. Our intention was to issue an early site utility and foundations package and get that out there so we could start that work. If this gets tabled, it might delay that. So if there is something we can agree to conditionally that would allow us to be able to put a site package, an early site package in for a building permit to move forward, it would be appreciated if we could figure out what that is, and maybe that's by going through some of these site-related issues and talk about what's going to be addressed, and most of them can be addressed. It's just a matter of getting a revised copy to the city or to the township here with these things incorporated into it, which is doable.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, please, Andy.
What's your position if your variance for the drive-through is declined? Is that going to affect your decision moving forward on the ice cream stand, or what?
Not at all. Not at all.
So if that, if your request for this variance for the drive-through is turned down by the BZA, nothing's going to change as far as what you presented to the board here?
No.
What you're presenting?
In fact, the site arrangement is already configured to allow for it with some minor modifications. So what you see in front of you is a site configuration for the ice cream parlor. Really doesn't change too much. We could probably skinny up one of the drives going around the building, but in essence, it would be the same configuration.
If I may, Heather, is there any precedent to providing for a site or foundation approval to proceed with? That way, they still come back the following meeting?
From the township's perspective? No, the zoning permit would not be approved or issued to the applicant until all the conditions on the approval of the site have been met.
Okay.
So the township would not give any kind of early, you know, partial zoning permit.
Okay.
I know the building department does phased approvals, but there's no precedent of the township doing that.
Okay. Thank you. Before we go into kind of a discussion here amongst the board and as well as Heather, just wanting to understand several of these that, from the site plan review comments, since we're on the site plan and not the design review, the number of review comments that would potentially alter the site plan. Parking spaces. One that jumps out at me is the driveway entrance, a concern about the site distance. You know, there's quite a curvature, geometrics there on Cryle where that road is being accessed for the ice cream parlor. And the traffic from Lake County is noted wanting a site distance analysis.
Is it typically done as part of a traffic study? Same people do that?
Yes. Yes, it is. Typically. And that's an analysis based on the design speed of the road, the geometrics of the road, and looking at the site distance for traffic entering and exiting the site.
Okay.
And that could impact this as well, the site plan. That's a concern, just from my own viewpoint, perspective. Perhaps, Heather, on the conditions, I know the staff has recommended a conditional approval, but on the site plan review comments, may I ask, the BZA approved the conditional use for all of these items, the ice cream parlor, the car wash, and the outside dining?
Yes.
Previously?
Correct.
As a conditional use, which we're familiar with, this is a conditional use in the Capital District.
So it is permitted on the property?
Yes. Yes, okay. And then the drive-through is what is in question. May I ask you to address the concerns that you had from the staff report that you think impact the site plan and what we're approving here in the site review?
Okay, I can do that. I can take a stab at that. Yeah, sure. Well, the first comment really is in the, as far as adding a sidewalk, that's something that's in the public right-of-way. Doesn't necessarily impact what's going on on the lot, but could possibly change rating, things like that, I would think. Number three, moving the freestanding sign back a few feet. That would change, obviously, in order to comply with the 10-foot setback. Number four, increasing that egress drive from the car wash to 15 feet would make that one foot wider, so that's a small change. The other, like five, six, seven, you know, some of the other ones, more than likely would not really impact layout. Some of the landscaping plan information would change, nine, 10, 11. Number 12, obviously, including in a few more parking spots for the ice cream parlor, would change that parking area.
Where are you reading from, Heather?
Under the staff recommendations.
Page five.
I'm sorry, page five.
I'm sorry.
Five, all the way back here.
Right here.
So here we go.
So if I can interrupt real quick, Heather. So when I draw attention to the board members, you've seen this as well, number five, number six, number seven, number eight, number 10, number 11, number 12, the big word is revise. Parking areas, layout, site, utility to show. The judgment of this board as to whether those are significant enough that impact what we're attempting to do, that what we're charged to do is approve the site plan. In your opinion, Heather, obviously you've given, you're suggesting a conditional approval, that these items are not as significant to alter the site plan. I mean, there's quite a few items there.
Collectively, all?
Collectively.
Oh. I definitely can see the concern that you're expressing, Mr. Chairman. And, you know, I have seen a couple, in architectural rendering, revision on layout showing a couple additional parking spaces that came in late that I believe Mr. Green is planning on sharing, but but I also, you know, collectively with the comments from the county engineer, as you pointed out, with the site distance and wanting the expanded trip generation analysis, some of those things could impact that drive location, where the county will allow for that drive to come out, the Cryle Road, so that...
Heather, excuse me, if I may, Mr. Chairman?
Please, Andy.
Let me ask you a question. When did you receive the staff report? The one that we're looking at tonight with all the recommended change? How long ago did you receive that?
I don't remember the actual date, but we've had it for a week or two.
Okay.
At least, I think. I didn't want to shortchange it because you were going to send it to us, but was it a week or two?
No, it was actually just yesterday. No, it was Friday.
Was it? Okay.
Yeah, it was only a few days.
Sorry, we've done a lot of work since that.
It's only a few days, yeah.
So you've had it for a while. You've had it for a reasonable period. You're aware of a lot of these issues.
Yes.
Did you come prepared with a list of your revisions and/or your plans to address some of these issues? Or were you going to just shoot from the hip at the podium tonight, or what was your thought?
We picked up on the parking change. A lot of these items, to be honest, a lot of these items were so minor, we figured they were just a talking point to say, make sure you include this. I mean, if I go through this long list of things, there's many that are just boilerplate in here. But, you know, we're talking, the trip generation is probably one that could potentially adversely affect the site, but that's a five-to-six-week-long study when you start having a consultant do that, so it takes a little bit of time. But most of these were very, were very small. Increase, you know, has increased the egress drive from Old Cryle to 15 feet from 14, not really a major deal. Utility plans show electric and gas on the site. We've got to get the utility companies involved in order to determine what that actually is. The lines are shown on the civil, so we can talk about where we're getting it from, but how it's actually connected in and what those requirements are. We're going to have to deal with the utility companies, which isn't an immediate thing.
Right.
So all of these, and even the six-foot sidewalk, you know, I really wanted to talk about that as well because it's really a sidewalk to nowhere. You know, it goes out to the corner of Cryle and Old Cryle, and then there's no sidewalk on the adjacent site, and that's the back of their property from the way it's oriented. So do we really want to kind of have a sidewalk section just there as part of this project? And I believe zoning has the ability to override that and say, no, we don't. So there's some of those things that I wanted to talk about, but most of these things were so minor in nature. It was going to be a, yep, we're going to do it, we're going to do it, we're going to do it. Didn't really need a drawing to say we're going to stretch a road from 14 to 15 or a drive.
No, I wasn't looking for that. I guess what I was interested in was, you know, with the large amount of conditional issues that have been highlighted here, I would hope that, since you were aware of these for a reasonable period of time, this didn't just get bounced on you tonight, obviously, or today, this afternoon, or whatever. You've had some time to look at this and review it. I was hoping that maybe we could go through this list and you could respond, or if you would like, you could just go ahead and go right down the list and tell us what, you know, tell us what you're planning on doing and fixing these things. And then I think that will help the board understand better what your, you know, what your position is on some of these things. And then, you know, that would be helpful.
Sure.
What about the cost impact? We're talking different pavement. County prefers different kind of aggregate base and so forth, and curbing, and parapets to cover the equipment on top of the building, wider driveways. There's a cost implication to you there. That's not a problem?
The stone issues going to 304 wasn't a big deal at all.
Okay.
Screening equipment on the buildings, I'm not even sure we're going to have equipment. The ice cream parlor's not going to have equipment on the roof. If you see the exterior elevations, you'll know why. The other ones, we are looking for interior rooms. It's a car wash. You know, 75% of that building is a very minimal-conditioned air because it's open-aired. So we could probably, we are looking to get everything kind of internal of the buildings and maybe one pad-mounted air handling unit if that has to be, and then screen that with vegetation. But I'm pretty confident we're not going to have anything on the roof.
Okay, so no major cost issues to you for any of these things?
No.
What about vacuums? It mentions showing details of vacuums. I didn't see any vacuums on the drawings. Are there?
There are vacuum stations. If you see where the staging lanes are for the cars coming into the car wash.
I did see that, yeah.
Just above them is about 10 slots there. Those are the vacuum station spots.
Okay.
They're a little wider than normal parking spots to move around the cars, but those are the vacuum stations.
Okay.
And I have cut sheets of what those look like, if you wanted to see what they look like. Please.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you have any other, anything else you'd like to give us to look at?
Sure.
I would like you to just kind of go down this list for us.
Yeah, I would have to agree with Andy. That's why I was kind of starting it with Heather to think about collectively if it's overwhelming to even go through. But hearing from Mr. Green, I think we would ask you, Mark, to go through them individually.
This is the parking revisions.
Oh, okay, all right.
There's the parking revisions, and that's what the vacuum stations look like. It's a pretty common vacuum station for a car wash.
I think our concern is usually if we have a recommended approval, there's two or three items. We're not used to two pages.
Correct. So we are, we're bringing consultant, most of our consultants on board. We've had Polaris on board for civil for quite some time, but we've just gone through a preliminary zoning review, and we're really getting into production mode to get this site package out in early. So that's part of the reason why the drawings that you see in front of you aren't 100%, you know, construction documents.
Okay.
Mark, does the second, this one answers the square footage issue question?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
It highlighted what our thought process was.
I see that.
The parking lot in the front, I think.
Yeah, yeah. This is the spaces, yeah. Oh, I'm sorry.
It's all right.
If we go through the recommendations here and the conditions from the staff, since the first one is the public sidewalk, Heather, is this a township kind of plan? Is this something the trustees are looking for, for development as development continues along Cryle?
Specifically...
As opposed to being a sidewalk to nowhere?
Right, yeah. So when we adopted the text and the requirements for the Capital District, which is property is capital, the thought was to include additional pedestrian-type facilities to provide an opportunity for our residents to access some of the features on Cryle Road and eventually, at the time, access our future town center that is still envisioned on the other side of 44. So in our zoning text, we have built in that as projects come up in this district that under, you know, the zoning commission felt and staff felt that there was support for this type of feature and that we would try to get the developers to do that as all these properties are built out.
And if I recall, the Sheets project had included the sidewalk?
Yes, yeah, and that's where Sheets was proposing the six-foot wide. I did talk briefly with Tracy Sakowitz about putting sidewalk in the county public road right-of-way since Cryle Road is a county road, and it's possible. There's some agreements that we'll have to work out with the county as far as maintenance and stuff like that, but, yeah. So there was some support there from...
Thank you, Heather. So hopefully that answers the question, Mark.
It does. I read that. I would only ask that the township take a look at that. Sidewalk to that corner, and what sidewalk, taking sidewalk to that corner means. You're really going out into high-speed areas once you get out past there. Is this corner lot really apply to have sidewalks, or is that more further into the Capital District?
I would like just to add, like, I'm not sure how familiar you are with the area where this property is, but literally just a couple hundred feet away is Hunting Lake Drive, which connects with Cryle Road. And there are over, you know, 700 homes back there, residents with some newer developments where if we had something like this, and we've already seen people walking and biking down Cryle Road because we have the Greenway Corridor that is right at Girdled. I feel like this would get used if we could eventually continue on and extend.
We just have to study it. I mean, one, it's an additional cost to our client. Number two is it's, those roads were designed with drainage ditches on the sides.
Yes.
So we got to look at topos and where that sidewalk can actually fall on the site with respect to topography. So we certainly could look at. I was just, I just wanted to bring it up that if we could get a, not a variance, but a pass on that sidewalk, that'd be great. If not, we'll look at it, we'll research it, and we'll figure out how to get it in.
Well, right now, unless the board has any objection, I think we want to see the sidewalk and look at it, please. If you can run through the rest of the recommendations, Mark, please.
All right. Next one is consider adding bike racks near the ice cream parlor. Absolutely. There's a fairly large front patio between the parking and the building. Bike rack could go. The proposed freestanding sign for the ice cream parlor does not meet the minimum 10 foot. It's literally nine or eight feet, so we just got to adjust it a couple of feet. It's no big deal. The, let's see, increase the width of the egress drive onto Old Cryle Road to 15. It's currently 14, and that's not an issue at all.
Thank you.
Revised site plan and landscaping plan to show proposed locations of light poles. We've included an electrical site plan in the packet that shows light pole locations. We don't typically show them on the site civil, but we can superimpose them if that's a requirement that we need to do. Normally, that's comprehensive. Same with power routing to those poles coming off the street and everything is usually in the electrical package, but we can superimpose them. It's not a big deal.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. Revised utility plan to show proposed electric and/or gas on the site. We show the overhead lines and the power poles for which we're getting power off of, and we show the gas lines on our side of the street. They're there. What we don't show is connections, transformer locations, and how that's happening because we have to work with utility companies to do that, and we just haven't got, it's just not that far yet. And the utility companies don't move that fast. But as soon as we have that, it's definitely going to be here for review.
Okay.
Revised layout to show locations of all building entrances. Yes, we could put a marker on the plans that show you where the entrances are to all the buildings. Do you also want to see, like, backup house employee entrances or just main entrances?
It's typically any door.
Any door.
So we can just make sure there's no conflicts with, you know, landscaping, or if you're going to put like a concrete pad or a sidewalk there that should be there.
Got it.
Yeah.
Revised layout plan showing the locations of proposed onsite traffic control devices and signage. We do not have a comprehensive signage package yet, but we can show what our thoughts are on signage. Again, we usually don't develop a signage package until we're deeper into the construction documents. We just don't have that at this point. Traffic control, though, there isn't really going to be any traffic control devices, but we can definitely come together with a signage package for site signage fairly quickly.
Can I make a comment, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
Can you clarify, like, then, as far as, like, would there be any stop signs within, specifically looking at the ice cream parlor parking lot? Are you planning, you know, painted stop bars or stop signs to control, you know, the vehicles within the site? Because as folks are coming out of this potential loop around, or, you know, coming out of the parking lot, who is to give the right-of-way, or any of that? That's kind of...
Yeah.
So I wasn't sure if there's necessary for any of that.
Going back to that drive, there'd probably be a strike there.
Well, and actually, the car wash, I'm sorry, rather, it was the car wash that was a little bit more confusing, not the ice cream parlor, my bad. So you come out, you go in the car wash, you come out. Do the people at the car wash stop and yield to the other traffic that could be coming out from getting their cars detailed, or how is that all going to work?
We've designed it so there's plenty of visibility to see cars coming. It just depends how much we want to... Do we want to oversign even for people in normal driving habits? You tell me how far we want to go with that. There's plenty of clearance there for view that you could look to your left and see if a car was coming. This isn't high-volume people flying around there. So if we need to put something there that says, "Stop and look both ways" to remind people to do that in today's world, maybe? We're okay with doing that. I just need to know how far we want to take that.
I think I would leave that to the judgment of your site civil, the traffic engineer, to evaluate, particularly with, again, site distance. If there's landscaping in the way, really, that's all, I agree with you, but unless there's landscaping that inhibits view lines.
Sure, we'll do that, and if there's any high-volume areas, which there aren't here, but if there are, then we'll sign accordingly.
Okay.
On the car wash, is the old Cryle north side, is that entrance only?
Yes. The north side being the entrance drive. I believe that is entrance and exit on that side?
And it's only 15 feet?
No, it is not. It's shown as... No, it is not. It's shown as entrance only.
Entrance only.
Yep. And then you got to loop out and come out around the other side for exit only, sorry.
Well, actually.
Yeah, but then we, we've got to change the arrows on your, your traffic flow because it shows some traffic coming down and traffic going up on that entrance. So if it's coming down, where's it going?
Good point.
Oh, you're correct.
To the car wash?
You're correct. That's probably just a graphical error.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's an entrance only?
That's how we have it currently designed. Entrance only.
Okay.
Is there opposition to making that entrance and exit?
No, it's just that I was confused with all the arrows.
Okay.
And if, if you have the, the vacuum stations, do they back up and go back to the right? I guess they're going to have to.
Yeah, the intention we designed this was to do a big loop. So if you're coming, if you're going into a vacuum, your car. If you get, come out of the, the car wash, you kind of go east there, wrap around, go to a vacuum station.
Right.
And then once you're done with that vacuum station, you go back south to go out the exit lane. You don't come back out the entrance was the intent. Somebody just munged up the arrows here.
Well, yeah, but. Is there a need for that pavement there anyway? If you're not going to get traffic coming over from the vacuum stations?
Oh, the, the 24 inch wide there? The 24 foot wide, the in-out section up there? Yeah, we'd probably skinny that down to 15 feet. That way it's a one lane only going in. Does that make sense?
They've got to turn around and come back though. After they vacuum, they've got to loop around and come the opposite way to get in line, right?
It doesn't make much sense to me.
No, when you, you come in, you're going to the, the car wash first. Most of, most folks, from what I understand, I'm not a car wash expert. We have Sonny's Car Wash for that. But most folks are come out of the car wash, then they're going over there to, they dry off their car, they wipe it down. Then they go, you know, then they vacuum it out and then they're going to pull out and go out the exit lane. They're not going to come back around.
I vacuum first because the dust from the vacuum cleaner can get on the car.
To each his own.
Well, let's go back to your first question, Mark. Would be opposed to that being in-out widen the driveway.
We could. We have no, no issues with doing that.
And then you have, you have that extra exit driveway to allow people, you know.
Kind of could be both.
You know what people are going to do.
Yeah. We could do that as well. Either way is fine.
See, see any issue with that, Heather? If, if the entrance was modified to, you know, widen to allow in-out?
From a zoning perspective, no, I don't see a problem with that. I'm not sure if that would impact the waiting or how the geometry or how they turn in to, for the pay stations.
Yeah, that's going to make a pretty tight.
Yeah, because if you draw that, I don't know.
And there, if you widen it that way.
What is your wash duration from the time you enter? Is it a conveyor or is it?
It is. It's a conveyor.
So how long from?
That's a good question. It's 130 foot line and, and I don't know the actual timeframe to get through there. They, they rate them on how many cars per hour cycle. And this line was the line that in order to make the right profit numbers, allowed them to get enough cars cycled through there. Sorry, I don't, I don't know the actual rate though.
And the three pay stations are, are there, I assume they sell subscriptions or?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, they will.
The, the pay stations all the same or is there a special line if you?
They're all, they're all the same.
Okay.
And then they'll have a card that they just swipe instead of putting a credit card in the machine that'll allow them to pass through.
Okay.
Could you do me a, a big favor and explain the stormwater flow? Can you do that?
I will give it my best. All right, let me get to that sheet. Well, stormwater flow is coming from all locations into the below ground storage tank. So it's going up.
Which is where, where?
That orange, is it orange on your drawings?
Oh, is that, is that what that is?
That's the underground storage tanks.
Because I said, what is this yellow hatch?
There you go. That's what it is. So everything is dumping into that except for catch basin number two. For some reason he has it dumping in on the outlet side of, of the, of the underground tanks before they go out to the street. So I have to check on that and see, you know, what the logistics.
So you have a pumping station or gravity?
Yes, correct.
Gravity.
So that catch basin two is the only anomaly and I, I don't quite understand why it's not going into the tank. There might be a calculation that one little catch basin off to the side is not a big deal bypassing the tank. I'm not sure.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Is two the one on, where's number two?
Two is next to the neighbor's building over there, that little square.
Oh, okay, okay. Yeah, presumably it's, it's, I'm just guessing from civil side. It's way downstream, so it's probably doesn't need to get into the storage.
Down the lot, yeah.
So.
Yep.
So, so this is gravity drain. What's the, the base elevation of the building?
So the parlor is at 980. First floor elevation is 980.
980.
And the, the storm sewers are approximately four to five feet deep, six feet deep, some locations.
Yep.
So that's an underground tank. Do you know how big in dimensions of it? Do we have that someplace in the note?
Yes, probably do.
Good.
Sorry, I'm the civil, so I know it. I know. It's on sheet 11. So they're polyethylene plates, pipe that's.
Oh, there you go.
Actually pipe. It's not a tank. It's a series of pipes that's made by this storm tech. So it's a series of pipes that fill. Or withholding and then it's released. So it's holding back the water. The engineer had to submit calculations that the water isn't increasing.
That's county anyway.
The county.
It's not us.
Right.
One more, well, maybe, maybe two more. The six inch sanitary is that adequate for, for this?
I would assume it is because that's what my civil engineer told me it was. I would, I will double check it with them to make sure.
County didn't say it wasn't.
County didn't say it wasn't.
Right. That's their review.
Okay, Mark, I'm sorry. I'm, 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 Mark to continue in case we, yeah.
Yeah, I'm done with that thing.
So.
Okay.
So anyhow, I guess I would again defer to the civil site on the signage and traffic and, and perhaps that northerly drive entrance to consider.
Extending that.
In-out if, if that works, then, and it doesn't inhibit the storage of cars that enter the car wash.
Yeah, this is, we're talking cars and pickups.
Yeah.
So I don't think that turning radius is an issue.
Yeah.
Shouldn't be a problem. And honestly, we have more staging than zoning code requires. So if we needed to knock that down to four cars per lane, we're still within the zoning regulations to do so. Would you like me to keep going?
Yes, please. Number nine?
Sure. Any, any ground based equipment not provided on the plan such as transformer generator must be screened in accordance with 3808. And I, there's no issues with that. We just don't have transformer locations yet. Revised landscape plan to show locations of light poles. We mentioned that above and contour lines at one foot intervals. So I was looking at, I think the contours are at one foot intervals, but. So I wasn't quite sure what that one was. Maybe there's an area, but at the areas I was looking at, they had one foot intervals.
I don't know. That was the, the actual landscape plan.
Oh, on the landscape plan? Ah, okay. That's a new one. Okay, so we can show contours on the landscape plan. That's fine.
Okay.
There. Revised landscape plan to meet minimum height. I, I think that's 24 inch height for evergreen shrubs and 30 inch height for deciduous shrubs, I believe. Okay.
I think so.
Again, not an issue.
You beat me to it because I wanted to teach Heather about shrub typo.
That's a big juniper.
Yeah. I got to see the truck that brings that.
Yeah, and our, our landscape, Knight and Stoller is our landscape engineer and our landscape architect, sorry, and but it's not an issue to change those at all. Make sure that we comply with that.
Okay.
Revised the parking area for ice cream parlor to meet the minimum 25 spaces required. The drawings in front of you have met that.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Update the following items on the zoning data block. I believe those are updated on there as well. We've just, the narrative or the graphic for the parking area square footage for the ice cream parlor. Internal parking lot landscaping provided a square footage in percent. That one's I'll have to check on. Parking required for car wash and office use is eight. Did that. Parking required for ice cream parlor 16 employees, total of 25. We've addressed that.
Very good.
Final plans. This is all Lake County Stormwater Management comments. Provide copy of notice of intent coverage for stormwater construction general permit since the site is greater than one acre of disturbance. These are, these are really all things that Polaris is going to have to get in there and get their information. A lot of these seem like boilerplate's got to have, got to have, got to have. So I don't, I didn't see any of these. Submit copy of stormwater management report. I don't see that, that one seems fine to provide. O and M manual for maintenance responsibilities for the underground detention. That's coming probably directly from the manufacturer. Not an issue. Storm sewer system to meet county standards. It will. Provide additional inspection reports on the underground detention system for future inspection and maintenance purposes. Could you maybe clarify that one a little bit, what that is?
I, I wish I knew, Heather. I, I saw that and I didn't.
I think you would need to speak with Steve Howser or Dusty at Polaris.
Okay, so I'll put a question mark by that one.
How do you determine if one of those tubes is completely wad with garbage?
That's going to be part of that O and M system. Somebody's going to have to get in there visually inspect. There is a clean out manhole.
Isn't that what this is saying?
That, that's, O and M is up there and then this says provide additional inspection reports for future inspection.
Would this be an annual inspection when they go to look inside there that they need to provide a copy to Lake County Stormwater Management? And do they have to do that for the longevity of the property? I don't, I don't know.
Yeah.
I have to, I have to find out what he's honing in on there. Recommend coordinating a pre-installation meeting with the underground detention manufacturer. Of course. This is a very unique system. Not unique system, but there not, not a lot of people spend the extra money to do underground detention. So absolutely there will be, will be a pre-installation conference. Landscaping plan to not impact drainage structures or grading. Yes, that is correct. Plan should include outlet structure configuration for underground detention system. It will. There will be a detail for that. And I think he has a separate one. It might be a Lake County engineer has a separate item on that as well. It's very similar. So I have to kind of clarify the differences between the two. Will downspouts from the proposed car wash tunnel building tie into the swales grading along north line to be extended to minimize any water flowing towards northern property? Here's car wash tunnel building tying to swales. Yes. That, that one I will have to provide clarification on because I just don't know the answer to it.
Okay.
But I will get clarification on that one. I think. Does, Heather, does the swell there, does that drain to the north? I guess it would kind of have to because you're going to the corner.
Yes.
Just seems like that's the upgrade. I mean, that goes.
Well, then north is this way.
Yeah.
So what do you?
He's saying he want, you know, the, the downspouts from the tunnel here that come down off the roof, are they draining into here and going north? I believe that is the case, but I'll, I'll have to get clarification from Polaris. Coordinate right of work with Cryle, Cryle, on Cryle Road with county engineer's office, of course. Lake County Engineer comments. Revised Lake County Engineer stormwater address. We will. Old Cryle Road, North and South driveway aprons, increase piping length from 35 to 40. Yes, no problem. Cryle Road driveway apron increased pipe length from 40 to 50. No problem. Has it been investigated to install, well, this is the other kind of coordinating comment about the outlet from the underground detention. Has it been investigated to install a basin to connect the outlet of the 18 inch Cryle Road drive culvert and the 12 inch diameter detention outfall? This would prevent long-term ditch maintenance issues while cleaning up the overall visual appearance of this driveway apron. That is stemmed from the fact that it's an open 12 inch pipe going into the ditch. He's asking, I think that we tie it into the culvert shown going underneath the drive. So it cleans that up and you don't have embankment damage from flow is my, my assumption there and not an issue, not an issue at all. Catch basin two is not connected to the detention system. I don't understand why, but I will find out. Pavement details. This is asphalt parking pavement. Calls for a five inch section, but he's asking for four inches of asphalt base there. And then two inches of asphalt concrete surface course. I think if this is a five inch item 304, it should be a five inch item 301 asphalt base there. I think that's a typo.
It's typo, has to be.
Again, these are, I will double check these with our, our client. We got to kind of assess the cost of those two specifically, but I, it's not an issue to comply with those. Concrete integral curb, or the next one is asphalt drive pavement. Same thing. Five inch item 304 aggregate base, five inches, 301 asphalt base and then two inches of asphalt concrete surface course for the driveways. Little heavier duty. Concrete integral curb detail, four inch crushstone should be revised to four inch item 304 aggregate base. That's fine. Just changing out the stone. Shape 10 of 12, class B bedding revised detail to use O dot 304 and not number 10 limestone. Okay, not a problem. And then lifts to be placed not to exceed six. So that's pretty typical. Next one is expand the text of the trip generation analysis to discuss that while there is limited land usage data, the peak periods for the proposed land uses are not consistent with peak hours for the roadway network. Okay. I will, does, Polaris did that language, so I will have him adjust the language for that. Provide site distance analysis for the driveway on Cryle Road. That will have to be a consultant hired to do that. So yes, we will do that, yes. And then provide stormwater management report. Is that an analysis of the stormwater system design to show flow going into the ditches? Is that what they're implying? That's what they're asking for there?
It, it, if I may, it's the same as what the stormwater management is and it's basically the calculations.
The calculations.
That identify the basis of design of the stormwater system.
Okay, good. No problem there. I think that's all the items. The rest, are, are the rest of these right? Oh, here we go. Staff recommends conditional approval.
That's for the design side. That's the next, that's part two.
Part two, yes. Okay, I appreciate you going through those in detail, Mark. Thank you.
And honestly, I didn't see a lot there that wasn't just more, more embellishment on the design that we have and, and minor changes.
I'd, I'd, now that we go through this in detail with you, I, I'd have to agree. The only, again, that site distance analysis is concerned, but how that impacts that driveway on that side. But then again, we're already, already asking you to kind of look at the driveway on the other side. So the site civil is going to kind of take a look at those two driveways anyway.
Yeah, I'm going to see if I can get that site analysis for the drive location up on Cryle there. I'm going to see if I can get that separate from trip generation study and all that too.
Yes.
I think that's somebody going out and looking at the angles and they could probably do that more quickly for us.
Yes, yes. And, and I, I believe from experience that the trip generation is not significant. This, this is a technicality about the peak versus the peak, the peak of the usage versus the peak on the road and.
Yes.
So again, to the members, I, that is not, it's more the site distance that is significant, that impact, impact the layout.
Great, we'll see if we can expedite that.
On page, on sheet six of 12. This is your abbreviated stormwater. Between the ice cream parlor and the car wash. The trash receptacle, whatever you call it.
Yes.
Is that all paved?
Yes.
It is?
Yes.
Do you have any posts? Because when I've seen, somebody's gonna do it.
Ballards, we talking about?
Yeah, posts, whatever.
Yes, there'll be, there'll be two of them protecting the front edges of that dumpster.
When I see somebody doing, they're saying, oh, I just did my vacuuming or whatever. Now I'm gonna go get an ice cream.
Oh, trying to get through.
And off it comes.
That's a fair comment, fair comment. We'll get a couple of ballards in front of the dumpster and if we need to do a third baller that has a little chain there to break the connection.
Is there any reason why you not want that connected?
Just didn't want it to be a pass-through, honestly.
Okay.
And it, we really didn't design it that way, so I don't know how the traffic flow is any good to do that. I think if somebody just trying to cheat the system to go through there the way it's designed.
Heather, do we have an issue with the length of the building? Didn't we have an issue with the other? Car wash?
No, that was the location to the side road.
That was a difference. No, not, not for this, no, because of the architectural elements that they provided, the length of the, the long wall was not an issue.
I don't see a number, yeah, 140 feet. Seems like it's pretty consistent with the one we had before.
Is this a chain car wash? I mean, a chain company like Rainforest or one of those?
The equipment is, but this is a one-off right now.
Okay.
It's a, one of the owners, the owners are Brandon Dines, which you might know. The other one is John Neckic and he's got a, it's gonna be named after him. It's called, he wanted it to be Johnny Rockets, but he couldn't, couldn't beat that copyright deal, so. But he's got a cute little logo like that, so it is a kind of a one-off. The equipment inside, though, is Sunny's and they do the equipment all over the place.
Back to your question, Hiram. I think that was related, wasn't it related, although that's on the, probably on the design review, talking about the building?
Okay, well.
But let's go back to that, let's go back to that because I recall that, yeah.
And I see, the one issue we have is that the ice cream parlor has a drive-through. But I see no renderings on the back half of this packet that show a view from that standpoint.
And it would not show the drive-through window or the speaker system in this package because it's a separate variance package going to BZA that we submitted after this was submitted.
Oh, okay.
That's why it's not in this package.
And is it on the west, I assume it's on the, or is it on the?
South side.
South side, sorry.
Yeah, the drive-through window will be on the south side. The speaker to actually order your ice cream would be on the west side.
The west side.
I don't know if that was a conscious omission of that elevation or not.
So the elevation, you can see the elevations on sheet one, A611. They just don't have those elements on there because again, this was something that the client asked us to submit for after this package was in.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, just for the record too.
Please.
Where it's labeled north elevation, that is actually the south elevation. So the north and south are transposed on these drawings. Same thing with the east and west.
That's a terrible egg on our face, isn't it? Sorry.
To add more confusion to it.
Yes.
Sorry, it looks like it's our first set of drawings ever.
Okay, the south elevation. The south elevation is the fireplace.
Yes, and that's the actual north elevation of the building. The north elevation up top, five, number five is the, where the drive-through window would actually be put in.
Yeah, that just shows a blank wall and a door.
Correct.
But that's gonna be revised.
We concentrate on the site plan here. Maybe I could ask other members, Frank, you have any questions on the site? If we speak to the site review? Site plan review? No questions?
This is sheet four.
Yeah, site plan.
And five, the briefing plan? Stormwater? No, I think, I'm fine.
Thank you, Hiram. Andy can ask if you have any other further questions or comments for the applicant on the site plan review?
No, he did a very nice job explaining their position on the recommendations. And the only other question I had was the, the importance of the variance from the BZA on the drive-through. And your, your position is that's not going to impact your position on everything else or the ability to move forward, so that pretty much covers the things I was concerned about.
Isn't the car wash also a drive-through? Technically?
Well, any car wash is.
Hiram, the zoning resolution does specify that a drive-through would not include the car wash. If you read the definitions, so it is regulated as a separate use than a drive-through.
Thank you.
Good question.
It is a good question, though, yeah.
No, a drag.
Or you can have your strane. It's not a drag.
Still have to drive through.
May I go to Rich?
Just a couple of clarifications for my own application, but the six-foot public sidewalk, I have a bunch of okays on my list here, but you're okay with that? Because item, very first item, number one, you're okay with the six?
If we're required to do it, then we'll propose it to our client.
We're saying we want that, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so that's an okay then. The other one, just so I understand it, you're gonna do a trip generation, is that a miniature traffic study or is it?
Yep.
It's not a full traffic study?
It's just, yeah.
And that's all we need, right?
That was all the county engineer was asking for a clarification on. And as Rich pointed to site distance study.
I just wanted to understand that, and that's to be done yet?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
If I may, Rich, they actually did the trip generation analysis.
Oh, it's done?
This is, yes, this question, comment is related to the analysis itself.
Okay.
Comparing, I'm not gonna bore you with the detail. Peak hour versus peak hour on the road versus peak hour usage on the site.
Okay, did we have that in the packet? I didn't see it. Okay. We're good.
Sorry.
It wasn't the packet.
We had a separate call for a consultant to do that. That's actually Polaris that did that one, so they had nothing to do with it.
Heather, any, anything else, given what you heard from the members or from Mark, related to what you've heard, the applicant and the comments? Any other concerns?
No, and I don't know if this falls under the site plan review or the design review, but I did have a question about the location of these actual vacuum apparatuses, where they would go on the actual site. So are they, do they go in the landscape area here? Do they go right in these 20-foot by 10-foot areas or where would these actually be installed?
Right at the edge of this concrete strip, so we just have to make sure.
That is landscaping there.
I'm sorry.
So this is a landscape area, that's why I'm asking.
They're gonna kind of go right in here and we're gonna try and do the doubles, so you can get two in there at the same time.
So they would, they would be in the landscape area or they would be on?
That's correct, yeah. We'll have a concrete curve there and then it'll be the post tunnel, it'll be in the landscape and then everything is kind of connected. You can see all the vacuum attachments are connected to the post.
But you wouldn't concrete this whole thing and do it like they're showing in the picture? That's what I'm just asking.
Do you want us to?
No, I'm not, I'm just, is that another change that we would expect to see if this would come back for?
There's no reason those can't be mounted in soft scape as opposed to hard scape.
Okay, okay. That was all, I was, no, I'm not suggesting that that's what the board would want you to do.
We can make it whatever you want.
No, 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 no. I just was wondering how this would potentially impact what you've already shown us.
No, we'll leave it soft scape for a minute.
Okay.
Excuse me, I have a question.
Please, Keith.
Just so that I'm completely aware of the situation. There's a current application in for the variance as it relates to the drive-through lane?
Yes.
But it hasn't actually come before the BZA yet?
Correct.
Sorry, I wanted to make sure I understood everything, but at this time I would recommend as counsel to the board that you do not approve the site map or design just because the proper order should be that the variance is granted for that drive-through before the site map and design approvals go through.
That was the question I raised with legal counsel. That was the concern, I think, of several of our board members regarding.
Took me a while, I just wanted to make sure I understood.
Thank you for checking on that, Keith.
Mr. Chairman, can I jump in there real quick?
Please.
What if we, I can't get access to my client tonight, but what if we can talk to our client and pull that BZA variance request? Can we, if we pull that, can we go through with an approval, zoning approval? I need their advice on whether we can do that because that means no drive-through, but they are, they're balancing between that and getting the ice cream parlor up and running for summer, so I'd like to ask them that and if they say pull it, then we can pull it and process the recommendation to.
And it might be something you could add later, well, with approval.
Yeah, absolutely. I just want to know if that's possible to do that.
I don't like that.
Me neither.
Because you don't know what kind of alterations would be needed at the time when they decide, okay, you got the approval, but then the stuff right now is fixed.
Yeah, but we could turn it down, the approval, later.
That was our thought process. I mean, if it doesn't comply and it's, it's gotta go through that whole process to get the approval at the BZA for the variance, so that's why we were gonna present all the drive-through window locations and site ma, site configuration really doesn't change. It was really two, two things on the building that change for that, so that's why we put it in, you know.
They could put in a drive-through window and not activate it, right? And then later ask for approval and we'd have the option to approve it or not approve it, or BZA would.
I don't think, once we do this and approve it, it doesn't come back to us again.
Comes to BZA, though.
Yeah, but then we don't have any say-so about anything.
It's really their call then. It's their call now.
I, I have a, this could be a strange question. Heather, the plans don't reflect the design for the drive-through, but we commented that the drive-through needs a variance. The plans that we have submitted before us don't all really, they reflect, it shows a.
Correct, however, there are some notes on the layout sheet four of 12 that indicate that they were planning on getting a conditional use permit for the drive-through, even though that would not have been permitted in this capital district.
So, I'm sorry, that note is where?
Under, under the zoning info on the left side of the page, you see the developer info, zoning info, and then they list their conditional use permits that were required.
Okay.
In my conversations with the applicant, you know, I was aware that that was a possibility that they would be looking at a drive-through even though it would not be, that, that would require variance, so.
So what would be wrong with, for construction expediency, we approve it without it and then later they go back and apply for a variance with the BZA to, to add that? Would that be wrong?
That's the same situation we have before us tonight. Giving a conditional approval without variance and then they seek the variance in the future.
If you had an existing ice cream store and you wanted to add a drive-through, you'd probably have to get approval for that, right?
Through BZA.
Yeah, BZA had to prove the use, but then depending on what kind of changes you would have to make on the site itself, that we'd have to look at the zoning resolution and see if that would require site plan review to accommodate those changes to allow for the drive-through or that would be something administratively approved. So it really would probably be the BZA making that decision on where everything would be going because.
Okay.
With the variance for the drive-through, they're supposed to be looking at, you know, where the window is, where the menu boards are, where the speakers are for it. So there, there really should be a complete package provided to the BZA so they know exactly where all of these things are going to be.
Could that be done later, though?
It could be, but I mean, is there, is there a way that you could speak to some of those things now? I mean, you've indicated that the pickup window would be on the south side, but what other changes do you, would you envision to the site layout if the BZA?
To the site layout, nothing. We've designed that lane to be double Y so you can get around folks that are at the drive-through window. And the only thing that changes is we're putting, we'll put some kind of speaker system on the west wall, the long wall as you come around. And then as you come around to where that employee entrance is on the south side, a drive-through window would go in there.
So they would order somewhere on this?
Yep, yep, and then drive around.
And there's only one lane for pickup?
Yep.
Kind of like East Coast custard. That's what they do.
The interior plan has already been designed to accommodate that, so it was really just a couple of amenities on the building, but the site plan really isn't changing.
So, but before us, we have, we have legal counsel indicating, which was, I think, our fear in the first place, which is why we had asked.
Yeah, I mean, our intention was to get the buildings approved. This goes to BZA. BZA can decide whether they want to allow it or not, but that's a separate entity. If they don't allow it, we're still building the buildings. If they allow it, then we'll incorporate those changes down the road. That was our, that was our intent.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're getting advice to the contrary, unfortunately, so unless...
You know, I don't understand. I'm a little bit perplexed.
Please.
Well, I mean, we, we discussed this and I thought very specifically via email prior to this meeting.
We asked them to table it.
And then we convened this meeting tonight with the intention of moving forward at the applicant's request. And I specifically asked at the onset of this conversation whether or not the approval of the book, the zoning, the BZA and their drive-through would hinder the, the direction of this project. His answer was it would not. After we went through 15 bullet points in detail, addressing all of the concerns, legal counsel steps in and says, we shouldn't consider this until the, the BZA hearing. Why weren't we given that advice prior to moving into this, even starting this whole conversation?
I apologize, I wasn't entirely 100% up to speed with the history of this project and the BZA granting conditional uses and variances, so I was checking, reading, trying to make sure I understood before I provided advice. I apologize if that caused any undue delay.
Well, yeah, it does for me because we, we wasted an hour. I mean, it's eight o'clock. We started this, we started this hearing at seven, or shortly after seven, I should say. And, you know, we, we could have, we could have saved everybody a lot of time and effort going through this process, a lot of questions asked, you know, if we, if, if the, if the, if the position was to table this hearing until the, the BZA makes their decision on the variance. Which leads to the question, why can't we approve what we have in front of us without a window? He goes to the BZA and they approve or not approve. And if they don't approve, we just go with what we've got. If they do approve, we go with what they would have approved. I mean, it's backwards, I grant you, but there's a time condition here to consider.
As long as you can guarantee it won't have to be any. As long as he can guarantee there won't have to be any additional alterations to this plan we have in front of us.
Valid point, but what would they be? To his point, it's a window and a speaker.
Yeah, I understand. That's what he's telling us.
The driveway's already there.
And what we're trying to get is site work.
Right.
And not really specific right now. He wants to get the site work getting ready to go, and we've got time on that south wall. On the south wall of the building, which is where the pickup station is, and maybe the west wall.
We've got... What's the problem?
We have time on the building structure.
I think Hiram is suggesting that we consider the design review separate... It's separate from the building.
Bingo.
The site plan review from the design review.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
And the applicant table the design review.
So the site could be...
Because the site plan isn't altered.
Good solution. That was going to be my recommendation.
I just read your mind, Andy, that... Why do you think I sit next to you?
I felt it.
You felt it.
You're getting it from both sides.
No, I'm serious. That was going to be... What I'm trying to do is I'm trying to come up with a way to salvage what we've done.
Right.
Okay, and right now, I'm a little bit concerned because we have legal counsel advice to table, okay?
I think we have a compromise.
And so I'm looking for a workaround, all right, without compromising the work that we've done. And I was going to say, could we... Because this is site plan, and we're contemplating site plan, design review is next, would the... Drive-through have more of an impact on... Because if it's... Correct me if I'm wrong, Mark, but it's Mark, right?
Yes.
Regardless of the... Regardless of the drive-through, the site plan's not going to be altered significantly. It's really... It's a design standard that's being altered in terms of the drive-through or not.
Yeah, it's vertical construction. The site would not.
Right. So the site plan itself, the driveways, the widths, the egress, the, you know, all the different things we've discussed aren't going to change. The only thing that's going to change, you've got to punch a hole in the side of the building and hang a speaker. Oversimplistic, but at the end of the day, that's what we're dealing with. Okay, so...
Wouldn't we even have that driveway going around the building if we didn't have a drive-through? No. We just have to drive up to the ice cream parlor and that's it. You wouldn't have the road going around the ice cream parlor.
No. Part of it's to help with the dumpster.
Yeah.
The bigger truck.
Oh, okay.
So my question to legal counsel, is that a reasonable workaround that you would be comfortable with? Would you say that you would be okay with that if we just... And we table the site or the design review and get at least approved the site plan review? Is that better? Are you...
That's what I'm...
Can I just make a couple comments before Keith?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, just from a practical standpoint on that, like, from zoning inspector's position, I'm not sure that that's going to help their project move forward any quicker. I'm not going to issue any kind of zoning permit until the site plan review and the design review have full approval, until all the final plans are submitted to me. That is how the process works. So I'm wondering, in lieu of that, is if an additional condition on the design review that if the BZA does grant the variance to have the drive-through, that they would come back for an amended design review showing any of the changes to the building that would... To accommodate the drive-through, the changes for the window and/or the speakers or signage, which we've not seen any signage to this point anyway. So, and so what I'm suggesting is possibly still conditionally approve the site plan review tonight for the staff recommendation, and which I know we haven't gotten to the design review yet, but consider one more condition on the design review in addition to those that staff already recommended, that if the variance is approved for the drive-through, that the applicant will come back and show you any changes to the building that would be necessary to accommodate that drive-through.
So how does that help you issue a permit?
It doesn't, but then at least they could continue, move forward with their final construction plans, right? I mean, and know that they've got that... I don't know. It was just...
You want to start moving dirt, right?
But I can't help them with that, so... So I'm not... Either way, I'm not, like I said at the beginning of the meeting...
So we can't issue...
We don't do a phased zoning approval.
So we have to have both approvals to issue the permits?
Yes, yeah.
So we can't do it in piecemeal?
That was a great solution.
What's interesting, even though there are two separate applications, we can't approve one and not the other.
They're really tied together, though. It's almost like a design review approval rather than an application. Unless legal counsel, you know, has other thoughts.
Mr. Chairman, we're willing to provide any information for that variance submittal through the BZA, whether it's building, signage, minor site, whatever it is, that should be part of that submittal for review.
What's the... How do we fix this?
I don't know. I thought I had it.
I thought we did, too.
Saying we can't.
Can I make a suggestion? Can I make a suggestion? Do like we do for public areas. Reese this. Give him time to go to the BZA, whether it be tomorrow or whenever, and as soon as you get the okay, we open it up again.
But we don't meet until December. It's another month.
We can meet anytime we want.
Special meeting?
Special meeting. We don't... Yeah, we've done it before. We don't have to be... Sure, we're required to meet once a month, but we have in the past for stuff like this.
You're right.
And that more often.
You're right.
That's true, yeah.
Right?
So the zoning resolution does...
Aren't we setting a precedence here to then? Well, how else are we going to get through this, shall we? BZA approval, December. That's how you're going to get through it. Lickety-split.
I'm just bringing up the suggestion. I think it could...
The zoning commission does have to act on the application within 60 days of the meeting's complete. So that would... If we waited till December, you guys would be past that 60 days.
That's right.
So you'll either have to do it tonight or come somehow fill in a special meeting as you're supposed to.
Exactly. We kill two birds with one stone.
What's... This is a question for legal counsel. What's the ramifications if we ignore your advice?
You're going to jail.
No, I'm being dead serious. What's the ramifications? If we say, legal counsel, we appreciate your advice, but we're not going to... We're going to go ahead and approve this. What... Does that put us in any sort of apparel?
Well, first off, you are free to do that.
Right.
It is just advice. I would worry that the legal snafu that might happen if, for some reason, the BZA didn't approve the drive-through, but the design plans do have the approval of this board?
But he's...
What we have right now is not showing...
Exactly.
The drive-through equipment.
Right, right.
So what we're proving right now, that we have in front of us, is a drive-around, not a drive-through, has no indication for any ordering station or any delivery station.
And we have on the record testimony from the applicant stating that the approval of the drive-through does not impact the... Does not impact the site plan.
Or the project.
Or the project. So if they... So even if they were... If we approve this tonight, and they go to the BZA, and the BZA says, "No, we're not going to give them the drive-through," nothing changes.
That's right.
Is that right?
That's right. That's correct.
Right. So, and I would not... I would not ask you to call one of the owners or, you know, the principals and ask them if they're willing to drop the drive-through. I think that's... I don't think that would be prudent. I think you should go through with your BZA process and see if it happens.
Right.
If it's an important... If it's an important part, not integral part, but important part of the project. So I wouldn't want you to... I would feel that would be very unfair to them to put them on a spot and make them decide to drop the drive-through just for... To get a decision tonight. I think... I don't like that idea either. I think it puts them in an awkward position, and they could be potentially sacrificing something that they don't have to, and for expedience. So I defer back to legal counsel. So is there... What's... If we ignore your advice, and we move forward with a vote tonight to approve the design and the site, both, tonight, approve both, so they can get started, so they can issue permits and they can get started. Is it your position that there would be a legal issue that if they decide to put the... So I'm... Would there be an issue where they could... If the BZA says, "No drive-through," are you saying that because we approved this the way, what we're doing today, that they could potentially go ahead and put the drive-through in anyway? I mean, because the BZA is... They're the final arbiter on that, right? They can't... That's a hearing. It's... They have to follow the BZA's decision, right? So they can't go back on... Can't go back on... They couldn't go back on us and use our approval as a lever to go ahead and put the drive-through in regardless of the decision of the BZA?
If you do approve it, and you have both the site plan and the design plan with various mentions to a drive-through, and the BZA denies it, I would fear that there would be legal grounds for a lawsuit to clear up whether there was approval for a drive-through, whether this board, in fact, was creating precedent for not needing BZA to grant a variance for a drive-through in the capital district. That's the reason for my advice.
All right, so then what if we can... Would it... Could we then conditionally approve this based on the outcome of the BZA's decision? Didn't we do that? Didn't we just do that? Were we conditionally approved on the other car wash?
Yeah, because they had to get the clearance.
Yeah, because they had to get the clearance thing. Didn't we conditionally approve everything, and then they went to the BZA?
There were two items.
And then the BZA...
For the classic.
Yeah.
Classic, there were two items.
And so we had to... We conditionally... We conditionally approved it on the basis that there would be... That the variance would have to be granted from the BZA to give them the variance that they needed. Could we do that with this? Could we conditionally approve this?
That was not quite an apples-to-apples comparison, though.
I know it's not. No, you're right, because it was a variance.
It was a landscape area that they were not providing, therefore, if the BZA did not approve the variance, that would have changed the actual layout of the site.
Right.
But the other one was the distance of the overhang to the road.
Right, yes, and then the overhang on the canopy over the pay stations. So if they were unsuccessful with BZA, that would have required them to resubmit to you.
That would have negated our decision, right, exactly.
Right, exactly, but I... What Mark is saying here, you know, okay, yeah, I don't know, but Keith...
Is there a way that we can conditionally... Is there... I'm sorry, Richard, go ahead.
Yeah, may I? For clarification, the drawings we have before us, sheet four, for me, is the only notation that there's a drive-through. There is nothing in the building plans, other than a window. There's nothing here that says there's a drive-through in the building plan, the design review.
Correct.
Correct?
Yeah.
So that note, notwithstanding, there's nothing in here we're approving that includes a drive-through.
I agree, right.
And a conditional approval.
Right. Maybe the additional condition is to strike through.
To strike the note from sheet four, striking that note. While it's not apples-to-apples, I agree with Andy, the overhang and what we did in classic.
Yeah.
And given the nature of what we're talking about here, the site plan, the design review, the building is not... Does not indicate anything about a drive-through, because that is a separate package you have before BZA.
But can BZA come back and re-add that line? If we strike that line, can they re-add it?
They wouldn't have.
It would make it a...
The BZA wouldn't have.
To your question, I'm guessing that's part of the variance request. They would request that...
They would add it back in, yes.
Yes, yeah.
Good point.
Right. They would... The applicant would add it back in, not the BZA.
Right.
So before this board considers a conditional approval, even to consider it, I think, would you, for the record, strike ice cream drive-through on sheet four of 12? The notation.
Is that the under-conditional use permit required for? Drive-through facilities, is that the line we're talking about?
Yes.
Absolutely, we'd strike that out. And there really shouldn't be any mention of the drive-through in the package at all. That's just a leftover that our civil guy left on there. So we'd strike that out.
Okay, so as far as...
Further down, we have ice cream drive-through. We've got to strike that.
I'm sorry, that's what I was referring to. Is there another one?
There's two spots, yeah.
On conditional use permit required. Drive-through facilities section.
But that is a misnomer, am I correct, Heather? That's not a conditional use.
Correct, it's not conditionally...
So it's... I'm considering it technically wrong on the plans. There's probably other errors on the plans, but that should be stricken as well because it seems correct. It's not a conditional use permit. It's under a variance request. So, Mark, if you're agreeable to strike...
We're in capital district.
Yes.
Capital district has drive-through facilities? I'd have to go back in my book and look. Does it have drive-through facilities?
No.
As a condition?
No, it does not.
It does not? Okay.
Drive-through facilities are not allowed as a conditional use in the capital district. That is why they are going to be asking for a variance from the Board of Zoning Appeals to allow a drive-through. Yeah, not a conditional use permit request, a variance.
So we need to ask that it be stricken, the notation drive-through under the conditional use at the top of sheet four as well? That's what I was referring to, the waiting spaces at the bottom of sheet four.
Yeah, I know. Do we want them both stricken?
Yes.
Yes.
But that could stay, couldn't it? Because it is required. You know, why would you take that off there? That is required, just like the food service, the counter is required.
Rich, I think that's to clear up any confusion as to the actions of this board unnecessarily approving a use that they don't have the authority to approve.
Right, we don't have the authority.
Yeah.
We don't have the authority.
If I might add, the BZA submittal will actually show a graphic that it complies with the 10-car staging, that that note number two there implies. So if we strike that from here, the BZA submittal specifically addresses that.
Okay. So for the record, you will strike... If you state where you're going to strike, sheet four under...
On sheet four of 12 in the civil package, we would strike out the note, "Drive-through facility, section 13.17, that falls under condition use permit required for." And additionally, we would strike under waiting spaces, "Ice cream drive-through, the number 10 under required and the number 10 under provided."
Okay, thank you.
Legal?
But you don't have to cross out "ice cream drive-through," just "drive-through."
Those numbers are specific for staging in the drive-through. That's why they would go away.
Staging.
Yeah, how many cars you can fit in there before they start getting out to the street? Kind of like you do with the staging for the drive-through. They acquire nine, I think, is the number before you get out to the street. That's all that's referring to.
Correct.
So from a legal counsel standpoint, are you uncomfortable with this, or are you feeling more comfortable with where we're going?
Definitely more comfortable. I don't recall seeing any other mentions to the drive-through in any of the packets, so as long as that was it, then I do feel comfortable now with recommending the...
Okay, good. Then I think we've reached a good point in this process.
We have reached a good point, and so... The... If the board considers... If the board considers the, at this point, unless there's any other questions or objections, a conditional approval of the site plan with all of the conditions indicated on Sheets Pages 5 and 6 of the staff review. Heather, none of those recommendations indicate conditional use of variance for a drive-through.
Correct.
What I'm referring to.
Yeah.
Your, your comment about that was staff comments.
Correct.
On the recommendations, so if we, if, if we so choose to conditionally approve the site plan review for, given, stipulating all of the noted comments on the record for Sheets 5 and 6, it does not include or reference the drive-through at all, so, just so we, we're okay with that. Right, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Okay. So, if there aren't any other questions, do we have a motion to consider that?
Let me see if I can get this right. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we conditionally approve Application Number 55 with the staff recommendations to be included, and the removal of, on the applicant's submittal, Sheet 4 of 12, remove the conditional use permit required for, remove "Drive-Thru Facility, Section 13.17", and, further down on the notes on the left-hand side, for waiting spaces, remove "Ice Cream Drive-Thru".
I think that's fairly complete motion, do we have a?
Site plan. You didn't use the word "site plan".
Right. Okay, I said for Sheet 4 of 12. Layout and Utility Plan.
But conditionally approve the site plan is what I'm saying.
Yeah, right.
As opposed to the design, which we haven't done yet.
Yeah, the site plan.
Like, that needs to be, I think, brought out for the record in the motion.
Thank you, Rich, yes.
Okay. One more time?
Please.
You can do it this time.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we conditionally approve Application Number 55.
Site plan review.
Site plan review with the conditions provided by the staff on Pages 5 and 6 of the staff report. And also on page, or Sheet 4 of 12, titled "Layout and Utility Plan", notes on the left-hand side, strike through "Drive-Thru Facility, Section 13.17" of the "Condition Use Permit Required For", and also, under waiting spaces, delete "Ice Cream Drive-Thru" with 10 and 10, the two required numbers there.
We have, we have a motion for
I'll second that motion.
We have a second for the motion as, as stated, for approval, conditional approval of Site Plan Review Application Number 55. We'll call vote.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Repper?
Yes.
Mr. Lingenfelter?
Yes.
And Mr. Eifels?
Yes.
Not done yet.
No, not done yet.
That's Phase 1.
I'll first thank everyone involved in the discussion here. It was a worthy discussion, but we arrived at something that I think this board is comfortable with. Thank you, so let's move on to the design review. Design review, Application Number 55, submitted by Marus Brothers Construction on behalf of the property owner IN9 Group LLC for proposed Ice Cream Parlor and Car Wash to be located on Cryle Road and Old Cryle Road, on a parcel known as current parcel number 08-A-020-0-00-048-0. Mark, if we could ask you to describe the building, your expertise?
Sure, sure.
Please, or both buildings, I'm sorry.
Sure. Get to the elevations here. Okay, starting with the Ice Cream Parlor on Sheet A613. Okay. The, the building itself, we're, right now, this is designed as a steel structure, has a single-slope roof, lots of glass to come into the, the building. The bulk of the materials here are metal. We have some Nichewa panels, which is a brand of rainscreen panel. It's a composite panel that looks like, has a woodgrain texture to it. The stones there are very, and, actually, it would probably help if I give you guys this to look at as well, these are the finishes for the buildings. So for the most part, both of these buildings are, the majority of them are metal panels or a rainscreen system, which is usually like a composite cementitious-type panel with an overlay on the surface to emulate wood, something like that. This building, Ice Cream in particular, has a gray, for lack of a better word, it's a horizontally banded flagstone, but it's, it's a, I think it's a very nice-looking stone. We've tried to keep the views into the building and out, to allow for lots of glass and connection to the outdoors. And then, and where we have opaque surfaces, which are really on the east side of the building, the west side of the building, sorry, that's there because a lot of that wall is occupied by back-of-house type stuff and not patron areas. So that's, the roof itself is a metal roof system. And, let's see, am I missing anything? The light fixtures that we show on here are very common. Everybody makes them progressive, Kichler, they're a standard tube-type fixture. It's a wall-mounted sconce, it has uplight and downlight on it to, to wash the pillars on the building. And that is really the extent of it. If you look at the materials here, let's see what I missed on the materials of the building. Okay, so he's got, you know, typical things like pre-finished metal coping, which is basically a trim around the roof, just an accenting or a complimentary color. The fiber cement panel from Nichewa is on there, showing the infills kind of in between the vertical wood-looking columns. And then you have the Nichewa fiber cement panel that, in the close-up on the rendering, the view looking south, you can see it has a woodgrain to it. And that's really what our client really wanted to, the precedent images that he really was excited about was almost a lodge feel, but we didn't want to go that earthy. So we tried to modernize it a little bit while still giving the wood look and, and the feel of the large expanse of roofs and openness that a lodge would have, and hence kind of the outdoor fireplace that in the fall evenings you could sit outside on a, you know, on a table, maybe some soft seating out there, that you could sit and enjoy the fireplace. The intention is to have this open for most of the seasons and not just, you know, a June-to-September thing. He'd like to have this open all year round if he could. The rest of the materials are all offshoots of that, you can see there's some pack clad, which is a metal panel system. Connear is the basis of spec for the storefront system. Very common storefront system, used everywhere, it's usually the basis of spec for everything. So that's a, that's an aluminum storefront system. And, and there's your El Dorado stone, that's kind of that horizontal flagstone. So that's the, the base materials for everything there.
No large signage on either building?
No, no. It'll be on the signs that, the, the ground signs that we have.
This funky logo that we're going to see.
I could, I could dig that up and send it to you.
For me, this is, this is an attractive building. This is an attractive design, from my perspective. Can you talk about, and then the floor plan, the floor plan for the Ice Cream Parlor is?
Yeah, that's a good point, sorry, I skipped over that.
Yeah. Sorry. Is that A201?
Yep. Sorry. Alright, so functionally, on the first floor plan, you can see there's a large canopy over the main entrance. There's a walk-up window on that same elevation, and a concrete patio there, so baseball teams, the idea was the gentleman owns, he owns a significant amount of nice cars, fine cars, which is why he likes the car wash. And he, he's had the outdoor window, so if you have a baseball team come for ice cream, they're not traipsing through the building with their metal cleats and mud all over the place. They can all hole up on the outside, get their ice cream, and go sit in the outdoor area. And they're more than welcome to go in and sit down, but that was the idea. So there's an outdoor window that's in the, the sales area. You come in the door, it's, it's a large waiting area. The area to the left of the door will be for staging of people to buy ice cream. Depending on how well business goes, there might be a few cattle corrals in there to kind of steer people around to fit them in. But you can see there's a basic amount of seating in there, there's some 42-inch-high bench-type seating up against the, the wall where the family restrooms are. So there's a bunch of different venues for the seating, all of them enjoying the kind of the views of the natural light coming in, the higher ceilings. And then there's a, two, two restrooms, janitor's closet that's all out in the public area, then everything else is kind of back-of-house and not the public area. So we have one office, we have a mechanical room, walk-in freezer-cooler, and then everything else beyond that is really storage of dry goods in that room, and everything else is production of the ice cream. Or making the sundaes, I should say, not the action. He does intend to make gelato here, so that's why we have some of the, kind of the sales area, and then there's a dividing wall, and then there's a real back-of-house area, that's where he's going to make the gelato back in that area, in addition to regular hard-packed ice cream, which they're looking at different companies to provide that.
The real gelato, I mean, real?
I hope so.
You're, you're not going to make the ice cream here?
No, I think he's partnering with, he's looking at folks like Toffs to provide the hard-packed ice cream for, for his facility, but he is going to make the gelato here.
Okay, push me.
And don't quote me on Toffs, because that's, he's just talking to different companies, that just happens to be my favorite, so that's why I mentioned it.
Now on Page A611, are we going to change the south elevation and the north elevation? Flip those two?
Yes, I will correct those errors, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Mark, the car wash?
Okay. Car wash, you might as well start with the plan since we're there. The car wash, and this is typical of a lot of Sunny's car washes, they have the long tunnel where you have the kit of parts to do all the things that a car wash does nowadays with all the flashing lights and the fun stuff that they do in car washes. So that's in the tunnel, the car wash tunnel area. That equipment room is where it will house all the, the tanks that feed all the equipment that powers everything that's out in that tunnel, so that's what that equipment room is for. We are currently having, Sunny's actually provides what that layout is, and we are about 75 to 80% done with that analysis of what goes in that mechanical room, or the equipment mechanical room. Additionally to that, there's an office space, and that was really generated from, usually there's two or three people that man a car wash like this, and they come out and they help you swipe your card, and they talk to you about what plans you can buy, monthly plans. It's a little bit of salesmanship there, and they're usually younger folks. So we created an office space that allowed for two to three people, a station for them to sit at, and is, as well a manager of types, now that you're getting into actually having the space adjacent to it, which is car detailing, which is basically cleaning and waxing cars. This is not a mechanical repair shop. This is really just cleaning inside and out of the cars. So the, the amount of people that were working there now kind of defined that you might need a manager's office, so that's why we have it.
Is that done by appointment?
Yes, yes. Additionally, there's two restrooms. There's a storage and janitor's closet and another mechanical room, and those mechanical rooms are where we're seeing if we can get the right-sized equipment to fit in those mechanical rooms and feed those populated spaces. Like I said, next to it, there's four bays for detailing. And that was it for floor plan functionality. There was a lot of design discussions that are really fluffy on this building. Some of the precedent images that our client liked was the idea of these wedge shapes, if you look in plan, kind of shooting by each other. And that started it, and then the, the love for fine cars. So some of these colors are defined to match Porsche colors. The silver panels are designed to match, you know, a specific Porsche color. The bricks that we use there, we're trying to provide some contrast between the light and dark bricks. I really like the black brick, it's got like almost a sheen to it, it's like an oxide finish. Really enjoy that one. And then we had an idea for the, the ins and outs of the doors, to put an actual gracing stripe on each one of the doors, red and green, on the overhead doors coming in and out of the tunnel. But the majority of this building as well is a, is a rainscreen system, a Nichewa system. There's some metal panel, any of the gray stuff that you see on the big swoosh, we call it. Those are all metal panels. The dark gray that you'll see is, is a rainscreen system. The mechanical room is all comprised of masonry. The detail bays are all masonry. And then that front office area is rainscreen system, some corrugated metal panels, and Connear storefront system. Roofing systems, we haven't completely detailed yet, but this building is, due to its design, is more geared around a membrane system and not a metal roof. So this will probably be like a TPO membrane system.
Oh. Over top of both, both parts of the lower level and the upper?
We haven't worked out the swoosh yet, but the lower roofs, they're all going to be TPO membrane.
Okay.
What was the issue, Heather, that we had with the other?
Yeah.
With respect to the long roof line? Didn't we ask them to break it up?
There was a previous project that didn't comply with the the roof line being no change in plane over 100 feet.
How much, over what?
100, 100 feet.
I think that same thing applies here. Roof line that's 140 feet long.
Looking at the, I don't know that we have an exact dimension on that, but looking at the Sheet A612, the, the main roof structure that goes over the car wash is not over the entire length of the building, however, it might be close.
Yeah, let me see if I can find the plan and
Is it, is it flat, or is it angled at all, similar to like the ice cream store is going to be?
It is not angled, but it is designed to have tapered insulation on it to go to roof drains.
Heather, if you look at A201, you'll see the car wash tunnel is 140 foot, 8 inches plus, I don't know, 4 foot 4.
So that roof line is over, I mean, just by calculation, that's over 100 feet.
145 down below. But what's the issue with that?
Well, the issue is that we don't, we require a break in that roof line if it's over 100 feet.
Is that in the Capital District, or just? That's, no, of course not, it's not, because the other one was not in the Capital District. Is that a?
It's a general design.
General design criteria?
Might I ask, is that designed to allow for a building that doesn't look like a big, long box? And break up the actual vertical surface in the roof line? Or is that specifically geared towards roof planes?
Specific to building roof, roof lines, planes.
Okay.
There's other criteria about long walls and breaking that up, but this was specific to roof line.
Where in our coat, where is that noted?
I have it right here, yeah, it's in 37, it's 3705G, building roof.
The continuous plane of a roof line shall be no greater than one hundred feet. Can be varied with cantilevers, gables, parapets, pitched roofs are preferred, that's in the, in the capital district. So was that something we had not noted in the staff review comments that Hiram's bringing up here?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it would be a concern.
If the board, yeah, I mean, if the board was concerned about that being over a hundred feet, yes. I mean, it, according to the applicant, it is over a hundred feet, which is there a way to modify that to, to comply with a hundred feet?
Yes, just put a parapet around forty feet.
I, I don't know what that would be.
That's a lot to cut off of there.
Yeah. No, just build a two-foot parapet all the way around on the last forty feet. That'll do it. You won't have a continuous greater than a hundred.
So it adds cost to make it look worse.
Right.
That adds cost to make it look worse.
Yeah.
Well, sorry.
I'm wondering if because of like the, 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 where the mechanical room is and the changes in those roof lines in relationship to this roof line, is there some wiggle room there regarding the interpretation and, and application of that particular requirement? I mean, we're not looking at, it truly isn't exactly what the resolution is saying. I think there's some varying roof lines if you look at the building as a whole.
You're reading, you're reading my mind.
Okay, all right.
Because the, yes, yes. Well, the building style, the very, there's, there's two, varying materials, there are varying roof levels, let alone lines.
Yes.
Personally, I don't have an objection, but I don't know what the technicality is if this is what is written.
Well, I mean, this, I, I think that we have, as a zoning inspector, my interpretation in this particular case, I think that based on this design, you know, we do have varying roof lengths and lines. And I think that it would not be inappropriate to take this particular building aside, take it into consideration and apply that in a manner that staff would feel comfortable with, meaning the purpose and intent of that requirement. Unless there's some other objections or concerns from the zoning commission, obviously, it's your call.
Well, thank, thank, I mean, just for pointing it out, because Hiram's correct, that was the issue, and sure enough, it is. So it's a matter of, as you say, interpretation that you're suggesting here, that due to the nature of this design is not as obtrusive in terms of a continuous building roof line as you would think, looking at this particular design. So I, I have to agree with, agree with Heather on that. Let's see, did we cut you off, Mark?
No, I think that was the design intent of this building.
Recommendation.
Yes, yes, thank you, okay.
Page six.
So if you could take a look at those on page six, Mark, and go through those as you did before.
Submit details for the vacuum stations for review. I think you saw the cut sheet I passed around.
Yes.
It's pretty common.
Can you clarify what colors they're picking?
Oh, if we were going to pick a color.
Yeah, I'm sorry, because I know like where I live is neon green at the car wash by my house, so like I'm assuming that's not what the client's going to pick. But this cut sheet has various colors, so maybe for the boards.
It's going to be silver.
Okay, sorry if I missed that.
Oh, that's okay.
Okay.
No, you didn't, I just didn't, I didn't mention it, but it would be silver. We're not going to do something kooky like that. Submit signed drawings to be approved and reviewed, reviewed and approved prior installation, absolutely. That is not a problem, issue at all, we just don't have them today. So we would propose putting together a signed package, bringing it to the township here and review it. And let it, and tweak it however we need to. Revised building elevations to show the wall-mounted light fixtures. We show them in the artistic renderings, but they are not on the elevation, so we will upgrade the elevations and show them.
Okay.
And it, it is, as I described, it's a tubular-shaped sconce, which is fairly common through many of the major manufacturers. And has up and down light for both, top and bottom. Submit dumpster enclosure details. I don't have those on there because we are working out the details. Our intent is to use some of the materials from the buildings. So our intent is not to slap a chain-link fence around this dumpster. It's to use some of the, the stones that we have and some of the better materials to create something that blends between the two buildings.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Okay.
So again, we could, when we detail that out, we'll bring them here, make sure they're okay. We work with Heather, however we need to do that. Building walls, parapets, or roof systems shall be designed to conceal all roof-mounted mechanical. I have, I have no intention of putting mechanical equipment on the roof right now. And if I did, I'd have to come back and beg for forgiveness, but we're not doing that. We've got, we've got everything that we're trying to tuck inside. Mechanical equipment screening techniques shall incorporate, so that's as well for ground-mounted items as well. Update the exterior material schedule with specific color choices as shown on the plans. The handouts that I gave you kind of enumerate what those are. And that was everything.
Very good, thank you, Mark. Questions from the board? Frank, any questions for the applicant?
None, Mr. Chairman.
Concerns? Hiram?
I still have an issue with that hundred and forty-foot wall, the roof.
Okay.
I think that's an easy solution and more than one way to break up that hundred and forty-foot wall. So that's my, my concern, we're not complying with our regulations.
Okay, thank you. Andy, can I see your comments?
Nothing for me.
Rich?
From a design standpoint, I think they're both very attractive buildings and be an asset to the community.
For me, I'd have to agree with Rich. I agree with him. I just love the, the different uses of materials and look and the roof line. I, I know, I understand what Hiram's saying, but I, between, and the two buildings offer some curb appeal. Make it attractive for Concord, for people to, to come visit.
Our client, we've gone through several value engineering sessions with our client, trying to reduce the budget down to some original numbers that he gave us. And he chose not to accept any of them. He didn't want any chintzing of materials or changes of things to reduce cost here. Please.
Any comments, any other further concerns, questions or comments, Heather, on your behalf?
No.
Besides what you have written? Thank you. Okay. So before us, we have the staff recommendation for conditional approval of the design review application. What are the feelings of the board? Do we have any?
No, based on his remarks and how they're going to be addressed, I feel comfortable with it.
Okay. Um, sorry, maybe I didn't, I was asking, is there any, what are, what are, what are the board's desires? What are the wishes of, of, of moving forward with the design review application? Do I have a motion?
That's what you, that's what you might know. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept with conditions as highlighted in the staff report, the six conditions. But we conditionally approve the design review application number fifty-five submitted by Maruus Brothers Construction, Cryle Road Car Wash and Ice Cream Parlor.
I'll second that one as well.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second for conditional approval of design review application number fifty-five. Heather, please call the roll.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Repper?
No.
Mr. Lingenfelter?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
And Mr. Eifelis?
Yes. Design review application number fifty-five is conditionally approved, conditionally approved. Mark, thank you, thank you for everything.
Thank you all very much for helping us keep moving forward. I really do appreciate it. Thank you.
Good luck with the project, good luck with our variance.
Great project. Can we take a five-minute break? Pretty, continue.
I, for me, I don't know if the board desires, but I'm looking for potentially tabling our work sessions here again. It's just been a long evening already.
I second. Yeah, I'm good with that.
All right, so without objection. We will, we will table again the work session for capital district table of uses as well as the work session. Well, we already have that table, section twenty-six is, is still on the table. Our next meeting.
Don't we have some, some new business? Don't we have a new addition to our staff that you ought to mention?
I, I, I should. I, I should. Maybe I can ask Heather to introduce her.
Oh, yeah, I'd be happy to. And I, I did brief introductions prior to the meeting, but officially, this is Selena Sotka. She is the new assistant zoning inspector. And we're very happy to have her here. She has worked prior to this in, at an engineering firm doing some environmental type of research, right? And she's currently a, a grad student at CSU. Want to add anything?
Welcome.
I grew up in Paintsville and I've been kind of co-registered with Paintsville, I've lived in my firm since high school. So I love the area, I love the community, I'm very excited to be here and kind of see the processes and how everything and everyone comes to their decisions on the development of the communities.
So this was your indoctrination to one, this is a tough, this is not the norm, believe me.
It was a lot of back and forth. It was, it was good to see how you guys came upon the decision and the dynamic of the group.
Well, thank you. Thank you for those comments. Appreciate it, appreciate it. Thanks for bringing that up. Appreciate it. Our next meeting is December the second, twenty twenty-two.
Sixth.
What did I say?
Second.
Sixth.
I think.
Yes, I did. December sixth, twenty twenty-two, I apologize.
You're not slipping anything past him. You should know.
Yeah, I know.
He's like the sharpest attack.
With, with that, the, our Concord Township Zoning Commission for Tuesday, November first stands adjourned.
Thanks, Keith.